Good evening. May I please have a motion to call to order the June 28, 2022, Richland 2 School District 2 School Board meeting? May I have a motion, please, to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that we convene an executive session for the purpose of student appeals, receipt of legal advice regarding hiring legal counsel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, is everybody up electronically?
No.
Okay. Okay, then we will do a hand vote. All in favor moving into executive session, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move into executive session. Good evening. I'd like to call the June 28, 2022 School Board meeting to order. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that the minutes reflect that executive session was concluded at 6:02 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote. Is everybody up electronically? Everybody up? Okay. Motion passes seven all. Okay, we will now move into 3.1, the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have as guests Spring Valley, I see principal Jeff Timoney here, major Greg Perry, and Jessica Bailey. They're going to talk a little bit tonight about their district service project with Blythewood High School and Ridgeview High Schools, JROTC. They make it clear that community service is a key component of what they do in JROTC. And their mantra has always been, "To whom much is given, much is required; and he who would be greatest among you must first be your servant." So I'm looking forward to hearing from major Perry and Ms. Bailey, I know it's Commander, but I'm getting used to saying Jessica now. Jessica is a 2022 graduate of Spring Valley High School. She will be a freshman, a knob at the Citadel this August, where she'll be majoring in biochemistry. It's her intention to receive a commission in the United States Air Force and serve as a United States Air Force surgeon. She likes reading, running, and photography. She joined JROTC because she wanted to follow in the footsteps of her parents, who are veterans and sympathetic to the call of the military. She quickly climbed the ranks within JROTC, completing her tenure as group commander of the 172-member Corps of Cadets. So we look forward to hearing from you. That's my introduction. Feel free to add anything else you'd like to say, but it's good to have you both here and, of course, your principal, Mr. Timoney. The floor is yours.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Dr. Davis, Madam Chairperson, Madam Vice Chairman, Chairperson. Mrs. Timoney, and all of you that are here this evening. It is indeed a pleasure to be here. Ms. Mackey has told you all the things I was going to say, so I should probably just shut up and let Jessica share what she has come to share with you. To borrow a phrase that Dr. Davis always shares, that it is our pleasure to bring to you what we believe the premier ROTC program in District 2. Now granted, all my brothers and sisters from Blythewood and Ridgeview and R&amp;E may have a beef with me, but I, we work really hard at being what we call being the very best of what we're aiming for. Many of you know ROTC program is a partnership with the Air Force, in this case here, and the school district. We do halves and halves, if you will. We have two bosses, that kind of thing, but really it's a citizenship program. We're supposed to take young students and help shape them and mold them. We're not looking to add military recruits. I'm not really into leadership, really. We're trying to build citizens, citizens that will impact their community. And one of the ways we do that is through service hours, community service. And we're graded on that. We serve it as a metric for us. And so we set our goals early on in the year and say, you know what? We're going to aim for this many hours here. And sometimes we get it, most of the time we get it, we achieve it, sometimes not as much. And so it's a core value for us, integrity first, service before itself, and excellence in all we do. And the service thing is really, really key. And Ms. Mackey, I've already shared with you, you know, I've come there just finishing up my seventh year, and it's really been more about making sure that those of you that want to be greatest among you must first be your servant, okay? And so in a day and age where kids are more interested in their jeans and their cellphones than what's in it for me, we're really interested in getting them outside the walls, and maybe sometimes inside of the walls, and saying, listen, what can we do to benefit other folks? So in this particular case here, we've been working with the Harvest Pact with Mr. Brad Fleming for about three and a half, almost four years now, and we've been doing it and receiving a great benefit. He receives the benefit, our kids get a chance to engage, but we thought back in August that, you know what? Why don't we take this to a whole other level? And I'll turn it over to Jessica now.
Thank you. You kind of stole half of my story, so... But once again, thank you for the Richland 2 School Board, for letting us speak. This is a program, not a program, a project that we have worked very hard on for the last six months before March 6, and it is just a privilege to be speaking on behalf of this. So like he said, last August when we were planning our community service calendar, we thought to extend our reach, to do something different that we've really much never done before, and we wanted to engage our cadets into a service project that would be bigger than themselves. We wanted to let them know that there is a lot of need out in this world, and that us as students, that we can help meet those needs. With that being said, we wanted to partner with Harvest Pact. We've worked with them for about three years beforehand, doing things like church events and even our own school-wide events, but we've never really had our own event. And so because of that, we wanted to partner with our sister JROTC programs. We all have very similar beliefs. Like major said, we are a citizenship-based program, and because of that, we have the same beliefs that service and community come first in leadership and really life. So because of that, we thought it'd be best to have some fun as well as give back to our community, and Blythewood and Ridgeview agreed. And so collectively, we agreed to make 20,000 meals for a cost of $6,250 between the three schools. On March 6, we essentially formed six lines with 12 cadets for each line, and with a good spirit, we made competitions out of it, of course. So, but it wasn't Army against Air Force, it wasn't Spring Valley against Blythewood against Ridgeview, it was us as a district. So we integrated all of them into different teams. So instead, we had fun names like the Raptors fighting against the Chinooks, and the Chinooks fighting against the Apaches. And so we did it that way. And at the end of the day, we made boxes, our students got to meet their sister JROTC programs, and we ultimately served our community. And the outcome was absolutely amazing. Out of the three schools, 90 cadets came, making 61 boxes and 21,000 meals to distribute to the Richland 2 Bookbag Program and the Christian Assistance Bridge. From all those cadets, all from all three schools, we nearly have 200 service hours that we had that weekend. And what I think is probably one of the more important factors is that our cadets got to experience firsthand what it is like in the process of serving our community. Our Spring Valley cadets set up and broke down the entire event. 26 cadet leaders from all three schools ended up collaborating together to run the entire event, and Blythewood took it upon themselves to deliver the boxes to Christian Assistance Bridge. Our cadets got to see the impact that they made through their good work, and hopefully were inspired to put more effort into their neighbors and their classmates and their community. Thank you.
Let me interject here. Thank you for presenting amazing, Emick. I can see why you were recommended to present to us. I also know that, yeah, Spring Valley's JROTC has a longstanding history of excellence. This is your platform to brag, if you'd like, and it's not bragging if someone asks you to share.
I thank you very much. Across the state, Spring Valley has a reputation of being known as a drill school, precision drill, excellence, if you will. If any of you have ever been to Spring Valley and been to our ROTC room, you'll see why. It is, in some schools, you'll have some that will earn one state championship or a regional championship or conference championship, but our school has the privilege of being a nine-time national champion in precision drill, 18 consecutive state championships, most recently, we've won 2019 and just in the springtime, 2022. We all bought rings and that kind of thing. We're very proud of it, very proud to flash it, but our kids work really hard at what it is they do. It's a target on our backs because we are, we have sustained excellence in what it is that we're doing, but since they know that, they work even harder to perform, to excel. You know, I might as well say at this point here, we'll graduate about 24 seniors roughly about every year, and usually half of them will go off to college, at least a third of them will take off and go into the military as well. And usually three to four will enter directly into the workforce. One of the things I'm most proud of is that I typically get brothers and sisters that will come along, you know? So after big brothers graduated, you know, I'll normally get little sister, you know? And I'm thinking of one particular family, she's been eyeing the program for the last three years, and she's finally making it as a freshman this year. They're excited about being a part. And of course, that helps our program, it helps our longevity, and really helps, I think, promote what we're trying to do here at District 2. Thank you again for the opportunity.
I just want to say congratulations, congratulations, those accolades. Y'all give them a hand for that. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Also, I'm so intrigued. 21,000 meals. 21,000. Thank you for doing that. I'm a Spring Valley grad, so I'm really proud. I'm proud of the whole district, but I got a little, you know, something for that. So congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. And young lady, when you become that surgeon that I know, that doctor that I know that you will be, you come back and you tell us all about it, because we are super proud of you, okay? And thank you so much. Y'all give them another round of applause, please.
If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to 4.1, the approval of the, oh, I'm sorry, 5.1, approval of consent agenda? 4.1. Y'all messing me up tonight. Y'all know it's my last night. Approval of the consent, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the June 28, 2022 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote electronically, please. Motion passes five yes, two no. Moving on to, motion carries. Moving on to 5.1, approval of consent agenda. May I have a motion? Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 28, 2022 regular board meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote electronically. Motion carries six yes, one no. Moving on to 6.1, student appeals. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, for student number one, I move that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote electronically, please. Motion passes four yes, three no. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, student number two, deny the appeal.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote electronically. Motion passes four yes, three no. Moving on, Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, student number three, deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Motion passes four yes, two no, one abstain. Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, student number four, deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Motion passes five yes, one no, one abstain. I think that was the last one, Mr. Manning? Or do you have one more? That was the last one? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to executive item 6.2, receipt of legal advice regarding hiring legal counsel. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, you've received information in executive session regarding the motion to allow the district administration to move forward with hiring legal counsel to assist us in the process of dealing with IG investigation.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that the board retain the White Law Firm to represent the district in connection with the inspector general's investigation. I further move that, consistent with board policy BDG/BDG-R, the board approve a special deviation from the hourly rate based on special expertise required in this matter, as discussed and reviewed with the board during executive session.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion? Dr. Scott.
Yes, although I know this is of urgency to hire an attorney, and I do support the hire of an attorney for the IG investigation, I just don't feel that I'm capable of voting this evening because we've only been offered one name and just received the information about 30 minutes ago, so have not had the proper opportunity to go back and to read the information, just to research it, and also just to have maybe two or three different law firms present it before us. So once again, this is an urgency, and I understand that and I respect that, but out of consideration, I just wish that we had been presented this information sooner to give us an opportunity to go back and read up on this firm, and an opportunity to look at other firms as well. And also, when I look at the difference in the cost, I'm not sure if we're being cost efficiency showing that, because this firm is going to cost more an hour, so I don't know what other firms would have cost, because I haven't, we haven't been given the opportunity to compare prices. But again, I know it's of urgency, but I just wish we had been given more information and an opportunity to compare apples to apples or apples to oranges. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. McFadden.
I agree with Dr. Scott. We literally just got this information 30 minutes ago, and I was trying to read through it as fast as I can, but it does seem like, you know, for, and I'm just curious, you know, this particular firm that was picked, there's different things I was able to see, you know, financial aid policies, sexual harassment, infractions and allegations of aid, wrongdoings by company towards a client, retaliation complaints against a private company, systematic theft from the warehouse, policy reviews, and contracting with vendors. And I'm just curious as to if those are some of the factors of the reason of why this particular law firm was chosen. I mean, I would like to have had different ones, but these are just what we were given based on these, the list that I just read. Those are just the few that I could pick out. I was wondering if there's other law firms that address these that we could have looked at before we bring a vote tonight. We've only got one option. It's either we vote for it or we don't. And I was just wondering, did everyone else receive this tonight at this time, or did other people know that this was going to be the law firm that we were going to be going with or voting for tonight?
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll...
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Yes, I have a few questions. First of all, we have our own in-house attorney. Why do we need to hire outside counsel?
That was an executive session item.
No, ma'am.
That was explained in executive...
This can be answered here. The public needs to know.
That was explained, Ms. Agostini. That was an executive session item. That was explained in executive session.
Point of order. I am asking that question. The public needs to know.
I'm not going to answer the question. It was executive question item. That was explained in executive session.
We can have our attorney answer the question. We have an attorney here, Mrs. Mahoney. She's welcome to answer the question, or Ms. Hawkins.
We, that was an executive, I'm making the ruling that that was an executive session item. That was, all questions should have been asked according to this.
No, you can still ask questions here.
Okay, again, Ms. Agostini, I respect your opinion, but I am overruling you at this time.
No, you don't.
At this time, those were executive session items.
All right, my next question. Who does the attorney represent?
Again, that was executive session items. We're not going to get into the habit of coming out here on the floor when we all know that executive session items, that is your opportunity to ask questions within executive session. This is not the time for that. If you had those specific questions, there was opportunity, and we could have gone back to a second executive session. There were no questions, so specifics, unless you have a statement or another general question that was not mentioned in executive session, we would not be addressing this out here in the public.
Well, okay, then I'll make a statement. I'm disappointed that I can't ask who the attorney represents. I would like to know, I'm disappointed that I can't ask if the attorney represents the school board. I'm disappointed that I can't ask if the attorney will be able to speak to individual board members, as I've been told before that they cannot. And I agree with my colleagues, we just received this information. I do think it's critical that we hire somebody knowledgeable, but I was not given this information again until executive session and have had not the proper amount of time to vet this information. I see it as a priority and important, but can't support this today because of the lack of timing and information given to us before this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. McFadden.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask that we postpone this and maybe do a special called board meeting in about two days, just to get the public to know, so that we have time to review this and maybe get some other options before we make a final vote on this large matter, where we are trying to hire a lawyer to represent us on such a large scale. I would like a little bit more time and a little, a couple more options, just to review who would be the best option for us. I'm not saying that these people aren't, but we haven't had time to vet this. So if we could do a special called board meeting maybe on Friday, enough time to give a, just for us to look at who Ms. Mahoney said she actually asked someone else to do, just something else so that we can see what, who else is out there and have an option.
I respect your suggestion, Ms. McFadden, but there is a motion on the floor. If that motion fails, you are welcome to make a secondary motion. Okay, any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, let's call for the vote. Let's vote electronically.
Can I, before we take that vote?
We've already called for the motion on the floor. We've already called for the vote, Ms. McFadden.
The vote hasn't been taken yet.
I've already called for the vote, Ms. McFadden. Please cast your vote. If you want to, if it fails, then you have a chance to make another one.
I would like to ask if we could amend the motion.
Ms. McFadden, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes four yes, three no. Moving on to item 6.3, no, I'm sorry, let's see, 7.1. I have no public participation that I see, so moving on to 8.1, report end of the year, Richland 2 highlights. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our community members and family members and friends that are here with us in person. And for those who are viewing online, it's given me great honor and privilege to share with you the 2021-2022 end of the year report. So as we look back on the 2021-2022 school year, excuse me, let's remember how we started by committing or recommitting ourselves to our core values of learning, character, community, and joy. The Richland 2 family is to be commended for showing up every day, determined to work, learn, and live in the premier way, by first, providing premier learning experiences; second, by demonstrating premier character; third, by investing in our community; and fourth, by creating conditions where joy can reside. In tonight's report, I will proudly share examples of dividends gained from our focus on the premier way. But first, let's take a look at data on the student population that we serve and love. We ended the school year with 28,146 students in pre-K through 12th grade with a percent pupils in poverty of 56.7%. In comparison, we ended the 2021 school year with 27,953 students in pre-K through 12th grade with a percent pupils in poverty of 56.8%. The number of K through 12 students at the end of the 2021 school year was 27,184 compared to 27,315 at the end of this school year. The ethnicity breakdown of our student population remained consistent throughout the school year, as seen on this chart that shows the breakdowns for the 45th, 90th, and 180th day reports. As one of the first two Purple Star districts in South Carolina, we took, we take great pride in serving the children of our military-connected families. Approximately 20% of all military families who live in our state send their students to our school. Again, that is an amazing percent, approximately 20% of all military-connected families in the state of South Carolina. students attend hours, attend our schools. And those families make up about 13% of the Richland Two family. For anyone interested in taking a closer look at student demographic data, the enrollment and ethnicity reports for the 21-22 and 2021 school years are available in the About Two section of our website. You will find them by clicking on the Richland Two by the numbers link on that page. Throughout the report are updates on district priorities, including the three shown here. After a great deal of research and planning, new schools, new school start times were announced at the November 16th board meeting, and grading expectations were presented at the June 14th board meeting. The district started exploring the idea of changing school start times back in 2017, 2018 with a review of data that recommended that later school start times for middle and high school students. After reviewing research, district administrators conducted a survey and received input from focus groups, advisory councils, and community conversations. Likewise, the grading expectations were established after a considerable amount of research, analysis, and input. A grading task force analyzed current grading practices to ensure consistence, consistent grading and equitable expectations for all students. The 2021-2022 school year also marked our first year of full implementation of benchmark assessments. The next several slides highlight how we use our, how, highlight how we have used our ESER funds to recover lost instructional time. The extended day program started in November. At the elementary level, we had 942 students enrolled in a program that was offered every Tuesday from 3:15 to 5:00 p.m. Students could attend up to 20 sessions to provide support for lost instructional time in math and English language arts. Over 1,000 middle school and high school students enrolled in the program that also offered 20 sessions over the time period of November 5th through May 9th. Parents of students enrolled in the extended day were asked to participate in a survey to provide feedback and describe the impact the program had on their students. Teachers were also surveyed and provided important feedback. The program is being evaluated to determine how it can best meet the needs of our students and teachers as we continue our efforts to recover lost instructional time utilizing ESER funds designated for this purpose. The 2022 Elementary SOARS Program is finishing up this week, and the middle and high school SOARS classes will start in July. SOARS was also offered last summer, and both years were funded through ESER fund, ESER federal money received by the district. This summer, 4,742 students enrolled in a program that focused on getting students ready for the upcoming school year in the areas of English language arts and mathematics. Maintaining our accreditation is, of course, a district priority every year with an official accreditation review taking place every five years. Richland Two completed the Cognia formerly advanced ed reaccreditation process in November of 2021. The district earned an overall index of educational quality score of 340, which is about 57 points higher than the average score for Cognia Improvement Network institutions evaluated in the last five years. Three insights from the 2021 review are: Richland Two displays clear evidence of effective governance and leadership. Professional learning structures in the district are cohesive, coherent, and deeply embedded in the culture. And three, Richland Two practices wise stewardships of its resources. Richland Two is working with an outside demographer to conduct a demographic study and analysis. A quick drive around our district reveals many new housing developments under construction that are bringing new families and new students to our schools. The data from the study and analysis will enable the district to plan five to 10 years out for ongoing student population changes. Additionally, in the fall of 2021, the board approved changes to the attendance lines to address growth and balance utilized, utilization of school facilities at four elementary schools: Bethel-Hamberry, Lake Carolina Upper and Lower, Langford, and Round Top. Two accountability reports were posted at, presented at board meetings this school year. Of course, those reports were based on the accountability data from the 2021-2022 school year. Data for the state accountability measures administered during the 21-22 school year will be released publicly in the fall of this year. And as always, a report will be given to the board and shared publicly in the late fall, early winter during the upcoming school year. A highlight of any school year is honoring our high school graduates. The 1,889 seniors who made up our district's class of 2022 received very close to $153 million in scholarship offers. We are excited to see the scholarship offers increase after a dip last year as we were in the middle of a pandemic. The class of 2021 had, had 1,836 students. Seniors received more than $138 million in that, in that class. As we move into a review of the work by our employees over the course of this year, here is a breakdown of employees in Richland Two. The largest group of employees are certified, which include classroom teachers, media specialists, instructional coaches, school counselors. In, in other words, employees who hold an educator certificate who are not serving in an administrative capacity. As noted on the slide, the number of administrators includes school principals, assistant principals, and assistant administrators. At the district level, the number includes senior leadership as well as other supervisory positions from all departments. More than 75% of our certified staff holds master degrees or higher. And in 2020, the U.S. Department of Education reported that nationwide, 58% of public school teachers hold degrees above the bachelor's level. To summarize, the ethnicity breakdown of our teachers, 56% identify as Caucasian, 37% identify as African-American, 3% identify as Hispanic, and 2% identify as Asian. The remaining approximately 2% is comprised of Pacific Islander, American Indian, and mixed ethnicities. For our premier, just a brief report on our premier 100 numbers for the 2020, 2021 cohort, which was our first cohort, we had 21 members. In the 2021-2022 cohort, we have 34 with a retention rate at this time of 75%. While we are talking about our employees, I want to share an update on what we are doing to get to the heart of how we can make sure Richland Two employees continue to feel valued. An application went out for employees to be a part of an employee value research team. Thanks to the overwhelming response, we went from plans from one team to planning for multiple teams and multiple opportunities for employees to engage in this important work. More than 50 employees participated in the design kickoff day on June 8th. They used the principles of human-centered design to understand the challenges faced by employees, ideate steps to solve problems, and prototype real-world solutions to benefit our faculty and staff. Plans for the upcoming year will include additional design days, innovation incubator teams, and the creation of an employee value steering committee. Our district track record of premier results from the annual fiscal audit continued this year. Our outside auditor issued four clean opinions for the fiscal year 2021. For the 34th consecutive year, Richland Two's finance team received certificates of excellence in financial reporting. And for the third year, Richland Two wisely used the budget surplus to invest in our future, our employees, and our community. For the future, we maintain a fund balance of 24% to 25% of the operating budget to maintain the district's strong financial position. Employees received bonuses, and our community benefited from the transfer of funds to the building fund to lessen the impact on taxpayers for the funding of annual capital improvements. As noted on the previous slide, we have issued a little over $300 million of the $468 million authorized in the 2018 bond referendum. To date, the debt service mileage rate has not increased. In the 2021-2022 school year was a big year for bond projects. The students and staff at the Center for Knowledge North are enjoying their first full school year in the new building that replaced a village of portables. Richland Northeast and Ridge U High School opened their new competition stadiums. Additions and renovations at Blyford High School were completed among several other projects across the district. The video seen here was shared at a, at a board meeting in early spring, so we won't be watching it tonight. For those who haven't seen the video, it is on the district's website and on our YouTube channel. As we head into the new school year, we are very excited about the opening of the new Bethel-Hamberry Elementary School and the new Forest Lake Elementary. Along with the successful accreditation review and financial audit, two other areas of our district operation underwent outside reviews. As seen in the first slide, the Office of Career and Technical Education and Student Transition Services at the South Carolina Department of Education audited our career and technological education local plan. In the findings of the audit, Richland Two was commended for exemplifying best practices in professional development and data quality. The district's food service program operated by our partner Sedexo received a successful administrative review, which also conducted, was also was conducted by the South Carolina Department of Education. The pathway to premier this year was not an easy one. We faced roadblocks, detours, and uphill challenges along the way. But despite this, we remained resolute in answering our essential question of how are the children with an answer that all the children are well. Proof of our perseverance and success came in November of 2021 when K-12 Dive named Richland Two their District of the Year. For anyone who hasn't seen our video series highlighting this prestigious award, I encourage you to check out the K-12 Dive playlist on our YouTube channel. The K-12 Dive recognition is one of many honors and awards earned by the Richland Two family as evident in the sampling shown in the next four slides. And that is not near, and that is not near all of the awards and accomplishments recognized in the district highlights at board meetings this year. District highlight videos are posted on our district's YouTube channel and link here using the QR code shown on the screen. Honorable board members and the Richland Two community, that concludes the report of another premier year of teaching and learning in Richland School District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to 8.2, Budget First Reading. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair. We will have our financial team come before us to present to you our budget for first reading. We have Dr. Molly and Ms. Shelley Allen. Dr. Molly, Ms. Allen.
Wanted to start out tonight just honestly thanking everybody for your patience during this budget development process. This has been an interesting and somewhat challenging budget year. I've been doing this a little over 25 years, and I think this is the first year that I have received roughly 10 different estimates of revenue at different points in time. Some based on revenue in physical affairs, some based on State Department of Education projections, some based on House, Senate, et cetera. So we've, we've had a lot of projections and been a little bit on a roller coaster ride waiting to get some final numbers. So we're very excited that tonight we are actually getting to bring a first reading of a budget based on some final projections. So thank you all for your patience during this process. We've also had a new funding formula this year that is a first for everyone, and that funding formula has evolved over the legislative session. So it's just created a really interesting budget year. So thank you all for your patience. We're excited to actually be at a point where we might be working on finalizing a budget in the near future. Tonight, administration is bringing a recommended budget to you for first reading. The budget recommendation that we're presenting is a balanced budget and is based on a zero operating mill increase. Briefly, I'll go through the revenue. Honestly, most of these categories and a lot of these numbers are the same numbers you've seen probably in at least four or five different presentations with just a couple changes. Since the last presentation that we had, we've gotten updated estimates from Richland County that increase our local property tax revenue by a little over $2.8 million. So that was very welcomed information that we received at one of the last county council meetings, resulting in our projections for local property tax revenue of a little over $117 million this year. The majority of the other line items, with the exception of the new education funding lines, have remained the same from the last presentation that, that we did. The new education funding line items are based on the conference committee information. We have projections in the new education funding line for aid to classroom program of a little over $123 million. And in the aid to classroom program transfer from EIA, $21.4 million. For a total revenue projection for next year of $332,729,770. This represents a $16.8 million increase or 5.32% increase. For perspective, in prior years, we've had a 4.8% increase. 19 to 20, there was a 5.83% increase. So this is really not that far off from what we have seen in prior years. Just a reminder and a perspective of kind of where our money is coming from as far as local property and state sources. And we've updated this with the, the projected budget that we're presenting for first reading. 63.9% of our revenue projected for next year will be coming from state sources, and 35.2% will be coming from local property taxes. Our total increase in, in all the state revenue line items in the general fund is a little over $14.5 million. Expenditures, which will go over the changes in a little more detail, which I think is a little bit more applicable for which are looking at, but, but our budget typically includes a breakdown of expenditures by category: salaries, benefits, utilities, property and operation contracts, maintenance and repairs, purchase services, supplies and equipment, and other expenditures. Our salaries and benefits roughly are going up. Salaries to $201 million. That's a 3.27% overall change in the dollar amounts for salaries. One of the other large significant categories we are seeing increase is the benefits category. As we'll go through it in some detail, we have some significant increases in health insurance percentages, and we have an increase in retirement percentages. We also are experiencing property contract increases related to operational contracts. I think we've discussed those a little, a little more in depth than some of the last meetings, but that is also another category we are seeing some increases. A snapshot of where the money goes, just to give a perspective of what it looks like, where our money is going out. The majority of our expenditures relate to salary and benefits. This, this coming year, approximately 86.5%. That's actually a little lower than we've seen in the past. That is because the majority of our custodial services are provided through contracted services. If you were to factor those resources, those human resources of custodial services in with salary and benefits, it would be closer to 88.6%. So just to kind of keep that in perspective, because the majority of those are contracted, it does make that look a little bit different. But this is basically representative of our breakdown. As you can see, 96.6% of our general fund budget is designated for As you can see, 96.6% of our general fund budget is designated for salary and benefits, utilities, property contracts, purchase services, and repairs and maintenance. Just to keep that perspective. Again, this is our list of increases that roll into those expenditure line items, but this is the detail giving the actual what and some of those breakdowns. Many of the line items on here you have seen in our past meetings. A lot of these mandated line items, the numbers are exactly what they've been as we have presented in the past several meetings. Roughly going through the mandated increases, again, there's an 18.1% increase in health insurance. There is a 1% increase in state retirement. Those two together resulting in about a $3.8 million increase. Teacher salary step is clearly a mandated increase, 2.3 million dollar increase. And then we're also mandated to increase bus driver salary schedules by 8%. That's $647,000. So those are the mandated increases that we, again, most of those we've seen at all of our meetings. Contractual, from a contractual standpoint, increases annual operation contracts, which include custodial landscaping, energy contract, is a little over, right at 3.2 million. Increases in liability and property insurance are estimated to be around a quarter of a million or $250,000, sorry. Increase in SRO contract is estimated to be around $59,000. So those are the mandated and contractual. I'm not going in order, I'm kind of going through them based on the highlights and the color, the color coding. So you can, several of these we've seen multiple times, so I was not going to talk in detail about those. With regards to the basic prior obligations, we have non-teacher salary step increases, which are basically where on a salary schedule, a person goes up and gets their step increase. For all other employees, that would result in roughly a little over $1 million. Then, as we've discussed in the past, the absorbing of the consolidated funds for at-risk 338 and the old aid to district funds, and this is part of the roll-up that the state has done, where they have pulled some of these EIA funds into the general fund. So the revenue is included on our revenue side, and these expenditures will also be included. I think that's not news to anybody. It's been in most of our meetings as well. Then we also, as we have, and, and I may not have the dates perfectly correct, so forgive me if I don't, but I know we're going to be working on the new Performing Arts Center very soon, and that will be opening in, I think, FY '23. So we are beginning to anticipate having to have some staffing for that to have initial startup, so we have included part of a year for that as well. Of the remaining items, these items in many ways are going to hit on our priority areas. As you recall, priorities from the employee surveys and from the board surveys had employee compensation at the top of the priority list. So that is definitely where we focus any additional funds we had at this point to try and take care of employee compensation. We have included in this budget a 2% increase to the teacher salary schedule above this year's schedule. And in addition to that, there are a handful of sales that we had to increase in minimal amounts above that because we had to hit the state minimum salary schedule. If you'll recall, in one of the earlier meetings we had, we showed the local portion of the salary schedules, and there were several sales, about 10, 12 sales, that we were shy of being $4,000 above, or of, we were shy being $4,000 increase from the state minimum, which is what they have done. So we had to address those. It ranged anywhere from, I think, $10 to $885, and there were just a handful of sales related to that. But that includes those increases. We also have increased all the other salary schedules by 2% as well. We included estimated savings from staff turnover. That's based on calculations that we ran based on the last year or so and what we're expecting for this year and what our potential cost savings could be for that. In addition, we have tried to address two of the areas that we felt like needed to be focused on. I know you guys have discussed it, it's come up in numerous meetings, doing something additional in addressing instructional aids. We have added an additional 3% to their salary schedule that will increase their salary schedule by a total of 5% per cell. Also, we have looked at the maintenance and custodial salary schedule and increased that salary schedule by additional 3% for a total of 5% per cell for that schedule as well. That leaves a few line items that we have remaining. One of those was to, is to upgrade to special education aids, to behavioral admin monitors, a little over $14,000. These are for classrooms that have very severe needs students in them and are very challenging. So they're having to kind of upgrade the, the folks that they have working with those students, and they're going to upgrade, want to upgrade those to behavior administrative monitors. Also have a district Title IX coordinator to address changes and additional information or requirements that are coming down related to Title IX, an FTE to add a coordinator for that. And then the remaining dollars, we have set aside funds to cover costs associated with school security and safety initiatives, as, as that has been something we have discussed. And we know we have a lot of needs in that category, and that some of them will be operational and not something that, that will be of a capital nature. So we may need operating funds for that as well. This is just a summary. I'm not going to read back through it because I just pretty much walked through it, but this is just a really quick one-page summary that kind of gives you the highlights of, of the budget and what we've included in the budget, what we've hit on. We were very fortunate, once we got additional, once we got additional projections related to local tax dollars with our updated figures from Richland County, and we got the state final figures, and we were not in a situation where we were mandated to do the $4,000 increase since we were already well above the state minimum for the teacher salary schedule. That put us in a, in a decent situation, and, and we've been fortunate not to have to freeze any positions at this point as well. So those are a few things that we just wanted to point out, and that is administration's recommendation for our 2022-23 budget.
Okay, board members, any questions concerned? I believe I saw Dr. Scott's hand first. Dr. Scott?
Just want to say thank you, guys. I know this was a very difficult year for all of you, and I thank you for taking the time to really go through this in a detailed manner so we can understand and taking the opportunity to hear our concerns, especially, I'm, I'm very excited to see that we are doing an increase for our bus drivers, our teacher assistants, our classified aides. I just want to say thank you because I think I've been a loud voice for making sure that we increase their salaries as much as we could with the budget that we have. So just thank you for taking the time to hear us and to see, and to make those changes, additional salary. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Agostini?
And thank, thank you. I appreciate the presentation, too. I do have several questions. Just trying to make sure that I understand everything. On line six, all non-teacher salary step increases, who does that include?
All non-teacher, that would include all other employees.
All other support staff. So that's the 100, or 1,479 employees from Dr. Davis's presentation, approximately the non-certified.
That sounds right.
Okay. So, well, then my question is, who are the next line? Line number eight, increase in annual operation, or, excuse me. That's not what I'm looking at. Line number seven.
Salary schedules? Okay.
Line number seven, increase in all other salary schedules by 2% for $800,000.
Okay, that is going to include all the other schedules besides the ones that are specifically listed on here. So there are numerous schedules. There's like, like, I'll give you an example, just a flavor.
Well, but first, one is a step increase.
Yes.
Period. And then the other raises the step level.
And, and we break those out because there are portions of it that are mandated and portions that are not. So in the past, we have always broken those out so that you can see the different, how much each one costs. So a step increase is basically where you move up from one year to the next.
Can I interrupt and maybe just like, is this for teachers?
Okay, no, teachers is on line four. Increase to teacher salary schedule.
And I'm just trying to figure out who's included on line seven.
Three and four are the same thing that she's asked. Three and four are the same thing.
Okay. Line item three is the step increase for teachers.
Got that.
So that's through your experience.
Check.
Four is where we're going to increase the salary schedule for teachers, so all teachers will get a 2% on top of their step if they're eligible for a step.
Okay.
In addition to that, the, that's basically the same thing that you're seeing on six and seven. It's just for all other employees, okay? So they'll get a step based on their salary schedule, and they will, their salary schedule will increase by 2% as well.
So I understand who line number six is. I'm still not clear on who line number seven is.
Same people.
Same people. So just like with the teachers.
They're part of the 1,400, or, let me just ask you this. Is this administration?
Administration would be included in that. Clerical people would be included in that. Security, bookkeepers, career development, parent, all of the other categories, because there are multiple, there's like 30 something salary schedules.
I, I guess I'm trying to figure out the, the difference between line six and seven.
Three and four.
I'm sorry, everybody.
Are for teachers.
I got that.
Okay. Six and seven is the same thing for everyone else, basically.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering then why six and seven are separated and not the same? I mean, included in one line?
Three and four is separate, and six and seven are separate.
And they could be included in one line. You know, our thought process is there, there, there are years where you're going to give a step increase because it's inherent in the schedule. That's kind of why we put it as a prior obligation, because that schedule is sitting out there now. So someone that's working now is looking at it knowing that next year they're going to get that increase, okay? So that's one component of the increase.
And three, number three, is mandated by law.
I, I completely understand three.
Number four is not. So that's why we have those two separate. And so we have the same two separate on six and seven.
You're saying, okay, line number four, I see that's not highlighted.
And the other reason is the steps are different depending on the salary schedule. So in, in number six, it's not, they're different, so it's very difficult to put it on one line.
I may need to call to get clarification, because you're going down a road of not what I'm thinking.
I'm sorry.
So, that's all right, that's all right. My question's not clear, so maybe we just have to have a conversation so I understand that better. Number four, the safety initiatives. What is, what are we looking at in terms of that? What does that budget line item include?
None of the budgets, Madam Chair and members of the board, none of the budget items are spelled out specifically, but the costs associated with school security and safety initiatives, we budgeted a total of $114,000 for any issues that, that we may deem necessary at that time. So some things of consideration will, could possibly be staff. Should we go down the road of metal detectors and assisting with metal detectors, it could be consultations, it could be materials such as locks, addressing the locks in schools, using some of the general fund, use some of this money to go ahead and initiate getting some of the locks, getting locks repaired and, and replaced at our schools. The possibility of also looking at the door alerts. And so we set aside a number, we set aside this money in the general fund to help us with that. So there are multitude of things that the 114,000 would allow us to do based on the priorities of the school, of the board as relates to school safety.
Excuse me, I'll make a comment to that. Thank you, Dr. Davis. You know, I'm looking at, this is the general fund, some of the things that have been mentioned, the metal detectors, the alarms, changing the locks at schools. I'm wondering why that has to come out of our general fund when the general fund can benefit our employees versus some of the stuff we're talking about. We've got, you know, the bond referendum money, and we also have a very large, I can't even think, reserve fund. You know, I'm hesitant why we don't use that, and I think we just approved not too long ago, putting money back into the capital fund to work on some of these. So that's a concern that we're using our general fund money that could be used for, you know, our employees versus some of these one-time purchases. So that's a concern that I have with that.
I can address that, just to ask to address that. This is a presentation by administration. It is not final, it's a first reading. If the board seems or deems that that line item is not effective or meets the needs of the board, my recommendation for any board members to make a motion to remove that line item and replace it with another line item that equals $114,000 or several line items that equals $114,000 that meets at least the majority of the board's perspective, or the majority of the board's direction in that, of the list of things that are provided to you on subsequent pages of things that have been left out. So this is just a part of our responsibility as administrations, provide you with the budget. Your responsibility is to review it thoroughly, as which you are doing, and to approve it. But we thought the 100, we deemed the $114,000 was appropriate, as we do have access to other funding, whether it's ESER money, whether it's bond money. We do intend to use some of those things, but metal detectors, for example, will be around $200,000 to $300,000. We don't have enough left over to do the metal detectors at this time. But general fund money can be used for capital improvements, and we would like to stay away from touching reserve fund, if at all possible, through the general operating fund. If we can do things through our general operating fund, and it's not a good practice to jump or tap into your reserve fund, and so that is a last case, emergency situations that we would do something like that, and since we do have $114,000, we decided to add that. But you can replace, again, I pointed to the board, there are a number of things on the second page, on, on subsequent pages that are not done. We're providing you with what our recommendations could be, but a motion, a simple motion to remove that from this first reading and replace the equivalent amount can be made, seconded and voted upon, and administration will follow suit from the direction of the board.
I would add, just related to that, as we, as I overheard, I wasn't in or involved in the safety meetings, but I think that the intent of this is that there very well could be operating costs like salaries. We may have to be.
Sure, sure.
And I think that's more what the intent of this line item would be, to go towards offsetting that versus the equipment and capital items.
Sure, and that, that doesn't, and I ask the question because that doesn't reflect in the FTEs on here, because that would be something that I would like to see, which sort of goes into my next point of the Title IX officer, what the need is for there, because again, that money there, I would like to, you know, I'm looking at the list, I wasn't prepared and knew that we should pick something off of here, but I would like to see something again for personnel to deal with the safety and security of our students, whether it be more people administrators in the hallways, or if we need more help, mental health, or whatever else, social services brought into our schools. That's where I'd like to see the money, money spent.
Just in response to that, again, this is a recommendation of administration based off of the valuation of the priorities of the board. It is simply a recommendation in first reading. Shelley and Dr. Molly alone cannot make those changes. We as an administration met, reviewed the requests, the needs of the district. Title IX, a Title IX coordinator is very much well-needed in our school district, as well as a cybersecurity expert or personnel member is very much needed in our school district. With a number of things, unfortunately, we can't do everything that we need. This list is not, doesn't, is not exhaustive of all the needs, but these are the priorities we brought forth to, to the, to the board for your consideration. However, we did provide you with the information, and motion can be made should a board member choose not to support or don't agree with the recommendation of administration to change that out for the equivalent. The only thing that we ask is that you keep in mind that this is a balanced budget, and we try to address the number of things that we could. And we try to address the number of things that we could possibly address with the limited resources that we have. So there's $114 that can be, that are in question. There are several items on the second, on another page. $90,115 for information security, cybersecurity manager. 103 for some admin monitors, which will get us two admin monitors at 103, if that is the board priority above the associated costs with 114. And Mrs. Allen, I appreciate you clarifying. But I did very clearly state in my initial statement that this could be personnel first. But I gave an exhaustive list, I didn't want to leave anything out. Should we use this 114 for something other than personnel and staff? I didn't want it to be an issue that we come back and say we weren't told that. So this gives us the flexibility, 114 gives us the flexibility for a number of things for cost associated with safety and security, which is a priority and initiative of the board. So we wanted to make sure that that was included and reflected. But administrative monitors are on here as well at a cost, an estimated cost of 102. If we take that direction, that leaves us with $12,000, which gets not much of anything else left for that. So those are the ways we prioritize that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions?
And I'm still not finished, Madam Chair.
What I'm going to do, Ms. Agostini, is I saw Ms. McFadden's hand, you've had several questions in a row. As per our policy, I'm going to go to Ms. McFadden, give her an opportunity to speak, and then I'll come back to you. Go ahead, Ms. McFadden.
I don't mind if Lindsay goes ahead and finishes and then I'll jump in.
Okay, you can go ahead and go now, Ms. McFadden, then I'll come back and let her finish, that's fine.
Okay, so, you know, I have quite a few questions as well. So I did send out an email and I did get the response about how much we would need in the general fund. Our books are closing in two days. So in previous years, we've had surplus, a lot of surplus. So I just want to know, because right now we have $78 million in our general fund. That is enough to cover us well for three months for any of the funds that we need to pay salaries and things like that. So with this extra money that should be coming in, and I say that because it's consistent, our budget hasn't changed, what happens with that money?
I think we've given an opportunity, we've tried to explain this on multiple opportunities on how the surplus works. This budget is for the 22nd to 2022, 2023 academic year. At the end of the 2022, 2023 academic year, as we're in the 23, 24 year, once we've closed the books, we'll see where the surplus is. We will bring that back to you all to ask you all what, and give you recommendations of what to do with the surplus. So at some point in this school year, for the 2022, 2023 year, we will have closed the books for the 21, 22 year. That may show a surplus because we didn't spend as much money as we budgeted. In the past couple of years, we've asked that a portion of that money goes to capital improvement funds so that the capital improvement funds allow us to borrow 8%, which allows us not to borrow against our 8% debt capacity. Again, the 8% debt capacity impacts all taxpayers, homeowners, and anyone when it comes to debt services. So by not doing that, that has been a benefit for our community for the last several years. We've used additional surplus for bonuses for staff. And in the past, sometimes we've used surplus, once a couple of years ago, we used surplus for purchasing of library materials, or library books for our media centers. Those have been the types of things we do. We won't know what that surplus is going to be for this budget year that you're looking at currently, 2022, 2023, until 2023, 2024 school year.
Yes, sir, and I was expecting that answer back whenever I originally asked it. And I do specifically remember asking if someone would let me know when it was okay to earmark those funds. So it is June the 28th, our fiscal year is officially over on the 30th. So we should have some kind of an idea, you know, how much we should have left over. It is two days out, and so I was wondering, because I distinctly remember thinking, and I remember asking you guys to let me know, because this is now turning into not just 2022, 2023, but now we'd have to wait another year, 2023, 2024, which I believe at that time I'll get the same speech, which will be 2024, 2025. So what I'm asking is, we have funds, and I'll just speak from the board funds, that we know are going to spew right into general funds. And we have went over this several times. And you're right, we have talked about this and the surplus has been discussed with us several times. And that's why we're having to bring this back up again. Because I was told that at first reading, that this is where we would be able to address that. And that's what has been told several times. And so I was waiting for first reading and I sent my questions out. So I'm just going to speak specifically to board funds. We know that we have not spent the total amount that is allocated for us. We do know at least that. We may not have, we may not know exactly how much. But last year, we had $255,000, at least just in board funds. We know we haven't spent that. And every single item and every single category, and this is me repeating this again for like the fourth meeting, we have had surplus that's going to dive into general fund. I'm asking, and from what I'm seeing and what has been said, there was $94 million there. There's $78 million there now because we spent some of it. There's about to be another however many millions of dollars that when we close this out, it should be if the numbers were the same. Now, I understand that there may not be, you know, there may be some in one area as opposed to another. But it's a good bit. And I remember a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about how we were in such a tight squat for the budget and how we were, how are we going to get out of this? And just like there's money that's there, that we're not in that top spot right now, there's money that's still coming. And I would like to earmark some of that for some of the safety programs that came here during our safety meeting, somehow, for after-school programs. Now, I see FTEs, I don't really know, you know, what are these FTEs going to be used for? Are they going to be used for after-school programs, that kind of thing? But we were told as a board that we would have a discussion about this at first reading and that we could come up with, you know, how we would earmark that. It's first reading, and I'm asking, where do we go from here with what I requested for how we would earmark this?
I just, I guess in response to that, I would imagine the board needs to have some additional conversation. I was under the impression that during first reading, and this is the board adoption process. We are asking for you to read first reading for the process of adopting a budget. And when we adopt the budget, the responsibility of the superintendent in cooperation with the financial, the chief financial officer, we have the overall responsibility of the budget planning. So we're submitting to you all for first reading, the budget for the 23, 24, I'm sorry, for the 22, 23 school year. The role and responsibility of the board is to give careful consideration of the budget request as presented by the superintendent. And we will review the allocations for fairness and for the consistency with educational priorities of the school district. Earmarking money from a specific line item in this budget for next year doesn't align with the budget adoption process. However, I think I understand your question. From my understanding, the time to set aside identified surplus is when we bring you the information regarding what that surplus would be. So if we have $13 million in surplus, when we bring you the recommendation of how to use that surplus, that recommendation could include setting aside specific portions of that surplus, 5%, 10% for at-risk programs, for additional training, for whatever. My recommendation would not to be to cut a budget line item and earmark 10% of a budget line item because you don't know what those expenditures are going to be in this current fiscal year. Things could change, and so the cost could be more than what we budgeted for. So at the end of the close of the budget, so we will be bringing you, for example, again, this year, the budget for the surplus from last year's fiscal year. We don't know what that amount is right now. That hasn't been determined, it's not been finalized and closed out. The fourth quarter has just ended for us. So we don't know what that surplus, what that amount is going to be. And we typically don't make a recommendation to you all till after the winter break of what we think that money should be used for. And then that would be the time for the appropriate discussion. But what we're asking for the business of the district and for the transparency of the public, we have shared with you all what we think is the, of giving you the recommendations of what we think the budget allocation for the budget should be with a zero mil increase for the 22, 23 fiscal year, which has nothing to do, will cannot include or does not include earmarking funds from a particular line item. That's not what the recommendation of administration is. You have the authority to review that and the responsibility of passing or not passing this budget based on your, if it doesn't or does not meet the board's priorities.
But won't the budget already be passed once we find out that surplus?
The surplus that we will be discussing will come from a budget that has already happened. That budget is gone, is over, is closed, the books are closed. But we won't know what the surplus is until the final audit is done. And they tell, and we come in and it says, okay, we had $13 million left over from 21, 22. We will get that information during this school year and then we will apply that. In the past, we've had to go back, I think, and Dr. Miley and Ms. Allen can help me, and amend some things as a result of that because it was, because it had already closed out. Am I misspeaking?
When we come back with a surplus amount, what happens? So for example, last year, I think it was 16.5 million, something like, close to that. When we came back with the recommendation to move a certain dollar amount to the capital improvements fund and to give bonuses, the board basically approved a budget amendment at that point in time. That budget amendment authorized us and budgeted basically a negative budget to spend into fund balance. And that is the way you go about spending fund balance. And so it was a budget amendment done at that point.
And it will be at a budget, and it will be a budget, it's important to add, it will be a budget amendment to this budget, to the 22, 23 school year, because that money has not been accounted yet. So if we have a surplus of 12 million, 13 or 14 million dollars, you would have, you have passed this budget. Now we have an influx of money. Now we need to have a budget amendment because you would have already passed this budget. Because we have to pass a budget by June 30th. And the budget has to be passed or we have to pass a continuing resolution budget, which we've already done. But our budget according to policy needs to be passed by June 30th. We can't wait to pass our budget waiting to find out what the surplus is going to be. So when the surplus comes in, we will ask you to amend this budget so that we can add money into it to be able to do the things that we want to do in that current fiscal year, which will be things like if we do bonuses, if we send certain money to capital improvements, if we provide additional FTEs, if we decide to send money to at-risk, if we decide to do whatever, you would all have to amend this budget because you would have already passed it.
I understand that completely. So what I'm saying is, is that we don't have to have the exact number or the exact amount. We can have a percentage of a specific line item. We can say whatever, we could say 85% of the board's fund that we didn't use. Because to my understanding right now, this same amount that we have budgeted last year and the year before that for board funds is still going to be exactly what it is. We're still saying we get $90,000 in supplies if we pass that vote on it tonight. But we're not using $90,000 in supplies, we used $1,000. It's also saying, you know, board travel is still going to be $63,000. But we haven't changed the fact that we can actually vote and go above the 49 that we're allocated for. So that's $20,000 that we're saying, boop, right into general fund again next year because we've already passed the budget. There's going to be another surplus and it's going to be a continuous perpetual cycle, $255,000. For how long, I don't know, because I just found this out this year. But I don't know how many years it's just been dumping in there. That might be why we're in a great financial position. But I'm just saying that if we are, if we do have that, and this is just one of those boxes, that's not even accounting for all the other different programs, three, four pages worth.
At any time, you can, we can transfer money from one line item to the next.
So let's do that.
But that's not what this process is about.
You just said it anytime.
No, no, I mean during the year, during the school year. If the board feels it wants to transfer line money from one line item to the next, we can do that. This is not the time to do that, this is not the appropriate time to do that. Because we don't even, we haven't allocated that money, we haven't allocated any of the money from those specific line items yet. We still have to pass the budget before we can, before we go back and allocate specific dollar amounts.
But Dr. Davis, there's still.
Just one thing, but.
There's still, there is still.
The board can do.
For the board of education.
Ms. McFadden, let him finish, so you can keep, let him finish.
Our salaries are still going to be, if we pass it tonight.
It's okay.
Give me just a moment, please help, I'm trying to do this right.
Go ahead.
This is still going to be that amount. If we pass the budget tonight, what is on here is what it will be. So at some point, we've got to say, we're going to do something else with this money. Because I know it goes to general fund. However, there are programs that our children are needing during this summer that we can use this money for instead of it just sitting there. And I was told that the way to do it is to earmark the funds at the first reading. It's the first reading I'm asking to earmark, and now we're saying next year. So I'll just go on record as that. I understand, you know, what you guys are trying to say. But I'm also going by what I was told, and I'm getting told different stories every time a new one comes up. So all I'm saying is that there's still $255,000 just of board fund going into general fund again. And I'll just leave it at that. And I guess we're taking the vote and this is going to pass again. So next year, we'll have this boat, this booklet like this.
No, ma'am, this is first reading. So there will be a second reading on July the 12th to pass this budget.
I thought you said it needs to be done by June 30th.
We pass a continuing resolution, so because we knew we wasn't going to have our budget passed by June 30th. So we have until July 12th is when we will have the second reading. The board can do whatever the board pleases in transfer money or allocate money. Our recommendation is based off of board policy. We're bringing you a balanced budget, meeting the needs of the school district as we as administration see fit. The political side or the elected official side of how you want to pass the budget, whether you, that's up to the board. So as an administration, we're not going to get into the nuance of this and that. Our roles and responsibility according to board policy, BDG, is to bring you a budget for you to review and for you to approve. We brought you a budget for you to review and for you to approve. We've given you the information as relates to things that are on here that we recommend for the 22, 23 school year. In addition, we've given you line items of information of things you can put, you can make motions to take off or add on. That being the case, once that's done, the budget within the second reading is done, the budget can improve as far as additional or adjusting line items. There's another budget, another policy that governs budget transfers, which could be used if the board feels it needs additional funds or a lack of funds or less funds to do certain things at the board level for that. That's a discussion amongst the board, that's not a discussion from administrative perspective.
Yes, sir, so I guess the board needs to have a budget meeting to discuss these things? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am, I'm not recommending, not this thing. Based off of board policy, our responsibility is to bring you the budget, is the budget of the school district, or the preparation of the budget of the school district, or the budget adoption process is the responsibility of administration. We brought you, we're bringing you the budget. And your responsibility is to give careful consideration to the budget request as presented by the superintendent. And we'll review the allocations for fairness and for their consistency with the education prior to the school system. So it also may involve faculty groups and citizen groups to review the proposed budget. And the school needs as it's finalized the budget for the adoption and presentation to county council. That's the roles and responsibility. There are a number of other things in there, but that's the gist of those things. And so I would take a look at the review of the budget, budget policy, BDG. And so I would take a look at the review of the budget, budget policy, B, DB and B, DBG will give you some idea of what this process that we're doing today is specifically about.
Okay. Mr. Manning, and then I'll come back to Ms. Agostini. Did you say have a question, Ms. Agostini?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Mr. Manning?
All right, so let me ask this question, Dr. Davis. Let's say what Mrs. McFadden is trying to do. So let's say I wanted to reduce the board budget by half because I wanted to increase spending for after-school programs. That, that's a reallocation within our, our overall budget, correct? So that's something that doesn't have to be done today. That could be done at another time because that's a reallocation of the board budget within already approved expenditures within the district. Now let's say I want the security position that you proposed, this 155,126. And let's say I want to say, I want to reduce the, I want to reduce board travel by 40,000, what's my number here? 40,604 and eradicate the line item 19 so that I could then fund the security position. That's a request that I could make as a board member tonight to say, I, I would like to reduce our board travel by over 40,000, tie that to the 115,000 in the line item. And that's how we could come up with a balanced budget to fund the security position. Is that correct?
We could put a negative amount to transfer, basically to shift around funds to another and reallocate it in the detail.
Right. So it's not as, it, it's not as clear cut as, you know, I, I think there's what Ms. McFadden is trying to do maybe, and I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, but is maybe try to reallocate within the budget, which is something that we could do at another time.
And you're reallocating recurring dollars.
Recurring dollars within the current budget year.
We don't want to build this budget with any non-recurring dollars.
Right. Or I could choose to leave the 114,522 that's not specifically stated as to what it goes to, but that's something that at later time, we could decide we want more hall monitors that Mrs. Agostini has asked about, or we could staff up for, for what we need for metal detectors or some combination thereof of FTEs that aren't specified here, but we could use that to specify FTEs to meet the board's security initiatives as we further define those, correct? So that, that money is left sort of open for the board to decide what we want to do with it, which I think is a potentially good move for us to say, let's have some recurring funds for potential FTEs to meet the security needs of the district. And, and that could be anything. We, we, I mean, I've heard the request for more positions at Blythewood. We could determine that that's a security issue and we want to use that 114,000 to allocate another FTE for teachers that we push towards Blythewood. So we could do any or all of that within what's presented tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. McFadden, does that help a little bit? Put, you push your mic. Okay.
I would like to hear and I can't hear. Thank you.
I like that and I appreciate you helping me in that area, but instead of using travel because, you know, there's, we went over on travel, I would like to use the supplies because that is like almost $100,000 that we're not using. So if I'm not out of order, I would like to make a motion to use the reoccurring fund of supplies and materials of $89,000 to allocate for FTEs for safety within the district, for safety, whether it be, that is the motion, whether it be for resources or staff.
I have a, I understand the idea and what you're attempting to do. I question whether or not that can be done for the approval of this, but that's not an item on this budget. That's once the budget is approved, you can make a motion to reallocate your allotted amount from whatever that amount is. Once the budget is approved, after the second reading, we can come back and you can say, okay, we have X amount of thousands of dollars allocated for travel, we're, for supplies. We want to reallocate $89,000 of travel, I'm, I'm sorry, supplies from supplies to this. That can be done after the budget is passed, but what is before you today is first reading of the approval of the budget. There are no line item issues in here.
But, Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I, I just.
It makes it, it makes it simpler for us to be able to do.
If, if the request though is to reduce the board, the board budget by $90,000, whether she allocates it out of, out of fees or just say, decrease it by 90,000, we can figure out where it comes from later. And I want to add that 90,000 to the 114,522 for security so that we end up with the additive amount.
Right.
I mean, is that not something that we could do today?
During first reading?
You can't. One of the things I would definitely caution you about, I'm not sure, Ms. McFadden, what numbers you're looking at. If you are using the audit report from like a year ago during the pandemic, the numbers this year remaining are not going to come out to look that high at all. I've already looked at them and done projections. You may definitely have 60, 50,000 left in the board category, but you will not have $250,000.
Okay, so.
So, so I caution you, and this is part of where I think Barron's trying to stay focused on budgeting it and then doing an amendment later because later you know exactly how much money you're dealing with. Right now, you're just guestimating how much.
Can I jump in? I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here for just a second. Ms. McFadden, well, I, I appreciate all that you're saying and we understand it and the ideas are great and all that, but what they're saying is, Dr. Davis is saying for the purpose of tonight's meeting, which is a first reading, this is just so we can establish a budget. So what happens after that, the movement that you want to see maybe, and, and we may all agree with the movement, but this is not the appropriate time for that at the moment. It's not saying it cannot happen, not saying that we, that we, that I may, we may agree with you on this.
I understand that.
So, so can, so for the purpose of completing this meeting, their objective tonight is to bring the budget. And then our objective will be after that, if there's things that we want to shift within it, that we have the ability as a board, not just one person, but as a collective board. I think we need to be cautious tonight about just throwing things out here tonight because none of us are mathematicians and we don't know the stats and everything that goes along with that. I think we need to hold off on that part of it, but I think we need to get to the part and go through, they're just giving us that so we have the basis. Is, does that make, does that make feasible sense to what I'm saying for you?
It does make sense, but I also know that this is first reading and we have.
This is just first reading. This is just first reading.
And we also have the ability to go ahead and address something.
I know, but what I'm.
So that when it comes to second reading, it will already be done.
But we'll have, Ms. McFadden, we'll have time, but what I'm saying is, we have to be cautious about moving numbers that we don't know. Shelley has repeatedly said, we don't know the real numbers. So I think we're, we're kind of stabbing in the dark with that. If we could just kind of, for tonight's meeting, for tonight's meeting, to move forward, can we please just stick with what we are charged with tonight and that's the first reading to get us a budget that we have to have by a specific date?
I would like to go ahead and continue with my motion, please. And I would like to make a motion that 95% of the board's supplies and materials surplus from the end of fiscal year 2022, or 2021, 2022, be reallocated to meet the security needs of the districts via FTEs or resources. And I would like a second.
What? Oh. Is, is that a motion?
I had, it is a motion and you can get a second and I can.
I'm going to, I'll, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
Even though I'm the one that kind of led us into this, I, I do, I appreciate the caution that, that our staff gave us, looking at the annual report for years during COVID where it's sort of a non-traditional year could potentially create some issues pulling the money from that line item when they've clearly stated that we, this year it's not going to be the same. So I, I support the idea of what Ms. McFadden is doing. I think the, the actual implementation of it at this time, I, I'm not going to be able to support it because I, I need to hear from staff on more consistently what we have, what, what the reserve is in that particular line item on a consistent basis so that I make sure that we don't sort of create another unintended consequence going forward. I also think when it comes to the safety initiatives, I think we as a board need to determine what we want, see what's unfunded and then figure out where we can pull funds for that particular line item. It's not that, again, Ms. McFadden, I support the idea, it's just not right now until we have more information to fully vet that, that out.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Agostini?
And thank you. And I, I concur with Mr. Manning on this. I, I support the idea of Ms. McFadden, but I'm not sure this is the time, but I'd like to discuss with you because there'll be more opportunities. I'm thinking about ESAR funds might be an area where you can look to do this. I'm also curious about how many, how much money we actually do have left. So without knowing how much money we have, it's very hard to say 90% will be designated toward that, but I like the idea of it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to put on the record too that, again, there's nothing wrong with the ideas of what you're saying, but I, I strongly suggest that we concur with the experts that do this and make, just wait until we sure, we are sure of our numbers because as Mr. Manning said, we do not inadvertently want to put ourselves in a position that we have, that we're taking from something that we don't need to be. Not supporting the idea, but I think I'm a person that I like to see the facts first. Let's put it out there and see what we got going on first. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the, the motion.
You have to do a hand vote.
Okay. All right. All in favor of Ms. McFadden's proposal, raise your hand. Okay, that's one yes. All opposed? That's six opposed, motion fails. Okay. All right. Is there anything else for the good or the cause of this? Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, in my final questions are around the need for a Title IX coordinator and why do we need one? I, I would like more information.
We can provide you with additional information, but I can give you a brief, I'll give you a more updated information in writing in our board brief or board update, but for first reading, I can simply share with you that Title IX right now is being done in human resources. Right now, every school is required to have a lead person or a, a primary person that handles Title IX at their schools. Title IX is very time-consuming and the legality of the legal issues facing Title IX not following through, ensuring that all Ts are dotted, all crossed and all Is are dotted, could have a staggering impact on the school district financially if we fail to meet the requirements of Title IX. There are multiple positions now with the litigiousness of society. Every time there's an allegation regarding some sort of sexual allegation or violation of Title IX, we are required to launch an investigation. Our school district is too big to have our senior chief human resource officers working so, also leading our Title IX efforts. We need someone whose sole responsibility is to address all Title IX concerns in our school district. This is in every department and in every school. And so I, I can't tell you specifically the number of Title IX cases that we've had over the course of this past year or last year, but I can tell you each of those cases has been, many of those cases take a extremely, can be extremely arduous in task and scope, some more so than others. And we have recently have one, I will, I will refrain from having that discussion here publicly about an issue that we have closed up that we had to ensure that we had the proper folk in place. We, we, it's good we have some folk in place that could help us, but we want to make sure that we are moving forward. Title IX, risk manager, those types of things are something that a system our size should have one person focusing on. So that was why we added it as a recommendation. And again, it was simply a recommendation along with several other positions, but we felt as an administration, we needed that position now.
Okay. And I guess my concern is I didn't, I was not aware of the need in terms of how many violations, and I would like that information of, you know, how many investigations we've had to do within our district that, you know, leads us to the point that we need to hire somebody full-time to handle this position.
Just as a response, and we'll be happy to provide that information for you all. Just as a response, the Title IX laws changed a couple of years ago, which requires more than it used to be five, six or seven years ago. So, so someone who may have been in HR in the past, who may be thinking about what Title IX looked like 10 years ago, Title IX today is not the same type of requirements and the amount of work and the workload for a Title IX investigation, a person who's coordinating that, is a lot more involved than it was in the past. But we'll be happy to give you not only the, the number, but also the scope of what needs to take place as it relates to a Title IX investigation.
And, and Madam Chair, I'd kindly request that we get that information prior to our board briefing because the board briefing only comes out three days before, so that gives us very little time to review the information and then ask additional questions. So, you know, if we could have it perhaps in the next week, I'd really appreciate that.
Just as a, just as a response to that, we provide the board with updates once a week, if I'm not mistaken. We provide a board briefing and a Friday, and a Friday update. So if, on the weeks that we don't have prior to the board meeting, that Friday is typically a Friday update. On the Thursday prior to the Tuesday board meeting is a board brief, but once a week, we provide board members with information. So we will be happy to get that in the upcoming update for you all, for your review, which will be prior to, I think will be this Friday's update. We'll have that ready for you.
This Friday would be terrific. I heard you to say that you would include it in the board brief, so thanks so much for getting this update on Friday.
Okay. I believe I saw your hand, Mr. Manning?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I think the Title IX position is necessary. As Dr. Davis has stated, the, the investigative process for certain allegations is a lot more, a lot more detailed than it used to be, which I think ultimately is a, a good thing and I think, you know, is our, as we strive for equity, I think that fits within our, our mission of, of equity. I also want to, I appreciate, and I've heard Ms. McFadden talk about the, the reserve fund and the levels of reserve. I appreciate the $3 million in attrition this year, which should cut into the, ultimately cut down on reserves. That's something that our district is kind of shy away from, using attrition as a, as a budget tool to, to essentially kind of, I don't want to say play a shell game with the money, but we, we always have a certain number of, sorry, Dr. Davis, that's not, I mean, staff, that's not the right term, but the idea that we always have a certain number of unfilled positions. So even though we have the budget for those positions, but we know we're not using that money every year, and so that's not a tool that we've not used previously, but I'm happy to see that we're starting to fold that in in a way that it will reduce, reduce our reserve and allow us to, to accomplish the goals and the mission of the district in that way. So thank you for, and I know that's not an easy number to come up with and, and one that you have to make sure that we don't over or underestimate to make sure that it's used effectively. So thank you for the effort that went into that.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to say this to you, you all have a heck of a job. I appreciate you so, so, so very much. And I also like to say, I'm so glad to see the salary increases of the, for the custodians and the aides because I know that, that was a big deal and so we're happy to see that and the increases for the 2% of teachers. So we're happy to see all that inclusive of that because that was a big push for the entire board. And, but again, I, I admire what you do. I couldn't do what you do, but I appreciate everything. Thank you so much for a very, very detailed, in-depth report. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to 9.1, draft agenda items for the July 12, 2020 board meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, if you take a review, a look at the draft agenda for the July 12, 2022 regular scheduled board meeting, as a reminder to our public and to members of our, our board, we only have one board meeting scheduled in the month of July. That board meeting is the July 12 regular scheduled board meeting. That board. That board meeting will be held here at R2I2 with executive session beginning, call the order beginning at 5:30, where we'll have a motion to convene to executive session. Our executive session items, right now, we don't have any listed, student appeals or anything else, so we will update that information as it comes in. If not, we will have our public hearing for the budget, which will be item 3.1, the 2022-2023 general fund budget. We'll then follow that with the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the approval of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. We'll have our first public participation, and then we'll vote on any executive session items if there are any. We'll have our new business, no action requested, which will be our Richland II highlights, an agenda for the next meeting review, which will be for August 10, 2021. The approval of that agenda. We'll have our second public participation if needed. Board and superintendent comments will follow, followed by second executive session if needed and voting on executive, executive session two items if needed. If not, we'll go from our second public particip, oh, sorry, we'll go from board superintendent comments to adjournment.
Okay. May I please have a motion for the approval of the July 12, 2022 board meeting?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the July 12, 2022 regular board meeting of Richland II.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Sherk, caution, parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take the, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. First of all, and I'm not asking to have this put on this agenda coming up, but I would like an ESER funds update when the budget process is over. I would like to make a motion, though, to amend the agenda to add for discussion JK, policy JKE expulsion of students and the administrative rule JKER.
Okay. Let me make sure I'm clear. You're asking for a motion on that particular item for tonight?
No, to be, well, to be added to next, the next board agenda.
To be added to the next board agenda.
Is that now where we are? Approving the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes. She asked you to repeat it. She couldn't hear you.
Oh, policy JKE. I'm sorry, I thought I was responding to Dr. Holmes. To discuss policy JKE expulsion of students and JKER, the administrative rule for that.
I'm going to let her get that up there and then you can see if that's your motion, Ms. Agostini.
Madam Chair, just, just as a point of clarification for me, for administration, we had a motion. Was the motion seconded? And were we at discussion? Is this, I'm asking a question, just to, I'm asking a question, Chair, the motion was made, seconded. Is this an, is this an addendum to the motion, an amendment to that motion, or is this a separate motion? Because it
Ms. Agostini, would you like to clarify?
My intent was to amend the agenda to add this in for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. I'm asking for clarification. There was a motion to approve the agenda. There was a motion was then seconded, and then we were at discussion. Once the motion was approved and seconded, I'm asking, is there, and are you asking for that original motion to be amended to include this, or do we have to take the, the first motion, are they on the floor, or do we take this motion first and then go back and approve this, the second one? So what I'm asking is apparently, I think this is a separate motion, so we're taking this motion first and then we'll go back and take the motion that was made to a passage, and am I correct? Okay.
Yeah, I, if the, and I'm sorry, I wasn't here, but my, my thought is if there's a motion and a second already on the table, Mrs. Agostini can make a secondary motion to alter that motion. Because if we take the vote and then we finish, then, then that's the end of the action that we, for that item, and so then there's not a space. So the, the way I understand it, we can make secondary motions at this time on the primary motion and be within the agenda item.
Okay, I'll resend my, my second so she can amend the, the original motion.
No, she
You can't pull your
So that she can amend the original motion.
You can't pull your second, so.
This is a secondary motion.
This is secondary.
She's within, she's within her right to make a secondary motion at this point. So this is the secondary motion on the floor. She wants to make the second, uh, second motion. You second it, you vote on this one, and then we go back to the original motion that everybody
That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, are we all cleared now? Everybody good?
I have a question.
Yes?
Ms. Agostini, can you elaborate as to exactly what you want to look at or consider with the request for the policy?
I, I'd like to discuss both of them, but it's more pertaining to the administrative rule that was written in March of 2010, as I did my research. We've heard from a couple of constituents or parents whose students have recently gone through hearings, and there seems to be a question about the administrative rule when it talks about the administration and parents may be able to be present and question witnesses or witness statements. And I'd like to discuss that publicly so that we can all understand what that means and if it might need to be addressed and changed.
You good, Mr. Manning?
I mean, I get the, the rough idea. I didn't know that that was something that, that there were concerns about.
I didn't either, so I didn't know.
But I mean, I get the, the
My office hasn't received any concerns or questions regarding this, this practice and administrative rule.
Yeah, and I guess that's
No one has received emails from any constituents regarding their students' hearings in the past, like at the last meeting?
I, I have not.
I have not.
No. I mean specifically to the fact of questioning witnesses.
I, I guess for me, it's, if there hasn't been a discussion with administration on the issue to bring it up to the level of needing a policy adjustment, if there had been some discussion and some general consensus that things aren't right with, with administration, but if there hasn't been that conversation, then it's not something that I'm willing to support until that conversation happens.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Any further discussion?
Yeah, my, my question is, I would like to have a discussion publicly whether we actually comply with the administrative rule during the hearing procedure or not.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All right. Is it up there? Is that correct, Ms. Agostini?
You haven't called for the vote yet, Madam Chair, so may I make a comment?
Oh, called for the vote.
No, no, no. Since you haven't called for it yet, I just had a comment.
Oh, you have a comment?
We're still to debate discussing, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Mackey.
My question is if there's a specific question, well, it just popped up, if there's a specific question with regard to the policy and the rule, I would, I would be curious to have, is it not possible for us to ask specific questions about what our concerns are? Aside from going to, aside from being added to the agenda? Yeah. Is it not possible, is it not possible for us to ask specific questions to you all?
Administration stands ready to have conversations with individual board members about questions about a particular policy at any given time.
Thank you. That's the clarification I wanted.
Okay, so Dr. Davis, you're saying that you will do that if there's a specific question about that?
We have the staff that can address any specific questions regarding that.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Dr. Alkin, I mean, Dr. Scott?
Yes. I just want to say that we are the policymakers, and if we have a board member that is concerned about a policy that was last revised in 2010, and this is now 2022, and we're saying that we are a premier school district and we want to make sure that we are working in an equitable manner, why wouldn't we go back and look at policies that have been revised, haven't been revised for 12 years to make sure they are up to date with the practices that we use now? That would just make common sense to me that if there's something on a policy and we know that is not our practice, that we most definitely go back to look at that policy to make revisions if needed. Again, we are the policymakers, but it's always very difficult for us to get a policy placed on the agenda just to have a discussion. I think we need to, to do better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a comment on that. Dr. Scott, we have placed several policies on the agenda this year from various members on this board's suggestion. We have done that. I think what they, I think what I've heard Mr. Manning say, and I'm saying, and I think Ms. Mackey is saying is, is that if Dr., if this was a wholesale issue that, that we knew about, or even if it was a singular board member concern that none of, that only one board member has known about, maybe this could be something that could be addressed and re, and if there's still an issue, then it could be put on there. So I don't want it to come off as if everybody up here is not concerned about making a change. That's not the issue. The issue is that no one, we are just, how you all often say, we are just hearing this tonight. I've heard no other concerns.
Madam Chair.
So I, I find, I am still talking. I am still talking. Thank you. So if we, we, just as you all often say in this board meeting, that you get stuff at the last minute, I'm just hearing this. I'm just hearing that there's a concern about this. I haven't heard a thing about this. I think Ms. Mackey says she hadn't heard a thing about it. Mr. Manning said he, so what I'm saying is, we don't need to slant things to make it look like people are not concerned, but again, this is a board that functions as a whole, not as one individual board member. So if there is a big concern, Ms. Agostini, Dr. Davis has said he can address it. Now, I mean, so just cast your vote whichever way you see fit on this, but I don't think we need to keep slanting things to make it say it's a premier. We are a premier district. We don't always agree, and we don't have to. Just because you don't agree doesn't make you not premier.
Madam Chair, can we call for the vote, please?
Yes, we can. All right. At this time, we'll call for the vote.
I just got kicked out of the system.
It won't come up, Christine? We'll wait for the electronic version. Motion fails. It says yes. Did you mean to put yes or no? It just came up, baby. So you had to, you had to push something. So do you want to change your vote? It's up there. Okay. All right. Motion fails. All right. Moving on to the next item. Oh. Excuse me? Oh, that's right, we have to go back to that. Ms. Mackey, reiterate your motion, please.
Approve the draft agenda items for the July 12, 2022 regular board meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take the vote electronically.
I still need to hand vote.
Are you not up, Ms. Agostini?
No.
Okay. You want to do a voice vote? Okay. Um, yes. Ms. Agostini, yea or nay? Okay. All right. Everybody else, are y'all up electronically? Okay, so cast your vote. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to item 12.1, new business action requested. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Davis, but I will make a statement before I do that. I would like to say to our general public, this has been a wonderful year and a trying year, both tied in together. I have enjoyed serving as your chair for the past year. It has been a growing experience for myself and I'm sure for everyone involved. I love this district and thank you for the opportunity to have served you as a chair, but my year is up. I really want to say hallelujah, but I won't say it out loud, but I just said it out loud. So, but at this time, thank you so much, board, for voting for me as your chair, and I appreciate you all, and I'm still going to work diligently on this board as best I can, but my time is over for the chairmanship, and thank you. Okay? Turn it over to Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. And just for the record, we're going to state that we are moving past item 11.1, the second public participation, because we do not have anyone sign up for public, for public participation for this board meeting. Moving to item 12.1, new business, no action requested. It's the nomination for the chair of the Board of Trustees of Richland School District II for the 2022-2023 school year. What we are seeking is a nomination of, a nomination of a board member for the position of chair.
Dr. Davis?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. James Manning as the chair.
Is there an additional nomination for chair for the 2022-2023 school year? Is there additional nomination for the chair for the 2022-2023 school year? For the third time, is there additional nomination for chair for the 2022-2023 school year? At this time, the floor is closed for nominations, and we have on the ballot Mr. Manning for the chair position, for the position of chair for the 2022-2023 school year. We do, the question I do have here, do we take a vote when there's only one person and no opposed? No one opposed, and we still have to vote, right?
Yes, you still take a vote.
So we still have to take a vote, but we don't need the paper ballot because it's more, it's just one person. So at this time, we'll take the vote for Mr. Manning for chairman of the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year. Christine, you doing a digital for one? No. You don't need a second for, for a nomination. No. I think, I think our policy states that it's either, it's paper. Yes. If, but it's paper when it's more than one.
It's paper if it's more than one, otherwise electronic.
If, if it's not more than one, it's electronic. So I, unless the board is okay with it being a hand vote. Yeah. Okay. That's fine. All right. Thank you, Christine.
It's, that's, I can't second. I second it?
There is no second.
Oh, there's no second. Got you. She waiting on you, Dr. Davis? Oh, you waiting on me? Oh, okay. I checked that already. I'm sorry.
We have a vote of five yea, one nay, and one abstention. Congratulations, Mr. Manning, on being nominated and being voted as chairman for the 2022-2023 school year for Richland School District II. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much for the, the vote of support. I look forward to a great school year coming into the, the new school year. Thank you.
Nominations have now been cast and closed for the position of chairman. Now we move to the nominations for the position of vice chairman of Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year. The floor is now open for a nomination for vice chairman.
Madam, Madam, or, Dr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Ms. Amelia Mackey.
With a nomination of Ms. Amelia Mackey, are there any other nominations from the floor for the position of vice chairman? Are there any other nominations from the floor for the position of vice chairman, chairwoman or chairperson? Are there any other nominations from
She waiting on you, Dr. Davis. Oh, you waiting on me, oh, okay. I checked that already, I'm sorry.
We have a vote of five yea, one nay, and one abstention. Congratulations, Mr. Manning, on being nominated and being voted as Chairman for the 2022-2023 school year for Richland School District Two, congratulations.
Thank you all very much for the vote of support. I look forward to a great school year coming into the new school year, thank you.
Nominations have now been cast and closed for the position of Chairman. Now we move to the nominations for the position of Vice Chairman of Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year. The floor is now open for a nomination for Vice Chairman.
Madam, or Dr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Ms. Amelia Mackey.
With a nomination of Ms. Amelia Mackey, are there any other nominations from the floor for the position of Vice Chairman? Are there any other nominations from the floor for the position of Vice Chairman, Chairwoman or Chairperson? Are there any other nominations from the floor for the role of Vice Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year? Seeing no other nominations, nominations are now closed, we have on the ballot for the Chairperson, Vice Chairperson for the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year of Ms. Amelia Mackey, please cast your votes at this time. We have five yea, two nays, no abstentions. Congratulations to Ms. Mackey, the motion passes or the nomination passes, congratulations to Ms. Amelia Mackey on the position of Vice Chairman for the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year, congratulations.
Thank you so much, look forward to working with you.
We've now cast the votes for Vice Chairperson, and all votes have been tallied, we now can move to item 12.3, which is the nominations of Secretary of the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year. The floor is open now to receive nominations for Secretary of the Board. Do I have any nominations from the floor?
Dr. Davis, I nominate Dr. Teresa Holmes.
For nomination of Dr. Teresa Holmes as the position of Secretary, are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any additional nominations for the floor for the position of Secretary?
Dr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker.
There's a nomination on the floor for Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker?
Thank you, but no thank you.
Dr. Parker has, Dr. Caution Parker has declined the nomination for Secretary? Are there any other nominations for the floor? Thank you, Dr. Scott, are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing that there are no additional nominations for the floor, I move that the nominations are now closed and that we vote for the position of Secretary for Dr. Teresa Holmes for the 2022-2023 school year, please cast your votes. We have a vote of five yes, one no, and one abstaining. Congratulations to Dr. Holmes as being voted the Secretary for the Board of Trustees for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Congratulations, now we have concluded all the business, new business, no action requested, and then we move to item 13.1. I'll turn that back over to our Chairwoman, Dr. Holmes, for Board of Superintendent Comments, Dr. Holmes.
Okay, we will go to Ms. Agostini first.
Thank you, and I'll be brief, I just want to thank Jessica Bailey and Major Perry for coming here today. I actually had the opportunity to observe their meal packing and it was truly inspirational, and if you'll excuse me, I'm going to depart, thank you.
Okay, Ms. McFadden?
Thank you all for another year, this fiscal year is over, look forward to the next one.
Ms., I mean, Dr. Scott?
Want to say thank you to Dr. Miley and Ms. Allen and their financial team, really appreciate you guys taking the time to dig deep and present a first reading on the budget this evening, and I'm very excited about moving forward with the budget, so thank you for that. Also want to say thank you to Major Perry and Jessica. Jessica, kudos to you going to the Citadel, I wish you all the best, and everyone, have a wonderful night, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for all the people who have to be here, thank you for being here, for those who choose to be here, thank you for being here and for observing online or however you choose to participate. Just reiterating, it's June, it's Pride Month, it's Caribbean American Heritage Month, and this past weekend was a celebration of Juneteenth for those who chose to celebrate, and Father's Day likewise for those who chose to celebrate, so I'm thankful for the things that we have going on this summer and the celebrations we have. I just want to reiterate for those, food insecurities are a real thing in our state, in our county, in the country, and I wanted to remind people if they don't already know to log on to richland2.org and to get information on our summer food program. There are meals being served every day, well, Monday through Thursday by Sodexo, from 7:45 to 8:30 a.m. and 11 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Bridge Creek Elementary, Dent Middle, Jackson Creek Elementary, and Killian Elementary, and I'm thankful for Sodexo providing that and for our district, Dr. Davis, our staff members who are supportive of that initiative to address food insecurities in our community, or just, you know, people who need a meal for whatever reason, so for people who need information on that, if you want to share with other community members, please go to richland2.org to get that information. Enjoy what precious little remains of the summer, we're already a month in, everybody be safe, bless you, have a great evening, thanks so much.
Dr. Caution Parker?
As usual, again, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Davis, for the highlights of the district, especially when we've come to the end of this, this very, and I shouldn't say come to the end because we don't know what's going to happen next, where it's going to go, because it seems to be recurring again, but I just, I'm just very pleased and very proud of the highlights that you presented this evening and all the things that we were able to accomplish this year in spite of the pandemic and any of the other negativity that was surrounding the district. I think we've done extremely well, very pleased. Thank you, Dr. Miley and Ms. Allen, former math student, your whole team and your whole team for this wonderful report this evening, and I know it hasn't been easy, especially with the legislature dragging their feet and whatever else they were doing there before they could decide what needs to be done. We know what needs to be done, but they don't. And I also want to say congratulations to our new officers, I'll be working very closely with you, and whatever I can do to help, just let me know, and everybody have a good evening.
Mr. Manning?
Yeah, thank you very much again for the support for the position of Chair again, and look forward to representing this great school district in the upcoming year. Want to, you know, just celebrate July 4th and what that means, is a country where, whether we all agree or not, but we have the opportunity for our voices to be heard, to celebrate freedom, to have the opportunity that this great country provides all of us to essentially be who we're willing, who we want to be with the right work and the effort and putting all of that into it, so I appreciate what that means, nothing's perfect, but we have so many more opportunities in this country than many other countries allow for us, and so I think we should celebrate that. And that was embodied, we got an email from a constituent that reminded us that, you know, sometimes the Supreme Court has five four votes, and we have to live with what that is, whether we agree with it or not. Sometimes our board has split votes on issues, but we have to walk away with respect for what this country allows us to do to have our voices be heard, but not always win or not always get our way in that. And we need to learn as a country to better respect and how to handle being on the losing side of that sometimes, not to say don't advocate, but to respect the folks that are in the roles, making the decisions that aren't always easy. But with that, I look forward to, I hope you all have a great 4th of July celebration, I hope everybody gets to take some time off so that we can come back rejuvenated as a board, we have a lot of work to do coming into this school year. And also part of our freedom is a free public education, and so what we do here is the cornerstone of this great country, our freedom, our security, there's no greater job in my mind than what we do here in public education for educating all of our students, so thank you to my fellow board members for the support in that, Dr. Davis and administration for the work that you do. And Dr. Davis, I know you're going to probably say something, but I'm going to jump you on Tom Cranmer, sorry, Tom, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. We lead the state and technology initiatives, and you've been such a huge part of that. Thank you for all of your work, all of your effort. I know we're in good hands, and I'll wait to introduce him till you're gone, but thank you very much, Tom, for all of your work.
Thank you, is it my turn?
It's your turn.
All right, I'm trying to be real quick here, again, congratulations to you, Dr. Holmes, on a successful year as serving as Chairperson and Chairwoman of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. I know it hasn't always been easy, as I tell you when I call you early in the morning, it's not good, and late at night as well, but appreciate...
Know what you actually say, if it's late, it ain't great.
Yeah, late's not great, but I appreciate your willingness to answer the phone and to support district administration in a direction that we feel is best to move this district forward. Again, congratulations to our newly elected officers, Mr. Manning, Ms. Mackey, and Dr. Holmes in their relative positions. Administration, along with the retired district, looks forward to working alongside of you all to ensure that we are providing our students with premier educational experience. I want to take an opportunity to quickly just thank my staff. I know oftentimes when you see these presentations, whether it's our finance department, whether it's something from academics, whether it's something from human resources, and whether it's something from communications, I have the best senior leadership staff in the state of South Carolina, and probably nationally, people who are experts in their areas, but we work well together and we use a very democratic leadership process with the understanding, of course, that I bear the brunt of the decisions of that, but we all share in the responsibility of the execution of the work, and so I could not think, I could not be more happy with the team that I have, and so thank you, Dr. Miley, for, and Ms. Allen for the outstanding presentation, as well as the work that Ms. McLauren, I'm sorry, Ms. Hawkins did early in his executive session. Thank you to our communications team for the work that you do and making sure that we get this information out in a timely manner, as well as the end of the year presentations, but we all look at the data, we all look at the information, and we all have input, and we're just so thankful that we have a great collaborative and loving spirit amongst our team to help us do this great work, so thank you. And to Tom, tonight is Tom Cranmer's last board meeting as a Richland School District Two employee, he said he will come back on a volunteer basis just to sit in the audience, he's retiring as the district's Chief Technology and Innovation Officer after working in Richland Two for the past 25 years, and thanks to Tom's leadership, Richland Two has been a leader in technological innovation. Tom has led the district to local, state, and national recognition in education and technology. The fruit of his labor really showed over the past few years as our district quickly and nimbly transitioned to e-learning, thanks to our well-established one-to-one computers, computing for our students. And reflecting on these years in Richland Two, Tom remembers beginning with virtually no technology and no transforming to students having their own personal computer devices, sophisticated software, and modern school settings that is nationally recognized, so Tom, Richland Two's pathway to premier technology innovation is well-established thanks to your leadership, innovation, and determination. We will wish you all the best as you begin the next stage of your life as a retiree. Congratulations to you, my friend, we will definitely miss you on our team, but once a member of this family, you will always be a member of the family, so we hope to see you at our family reunion for retirees in the very near future. Thank you for everything, brother.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you, Major Perry and Jessica, for your presentation, I appreciate that, and I think what I want to talk to say is, Dr. Davis, thank you for your leadership with the highlights, because we are so inundated right now with everything negative, everything negative, but we have so much in this district to celebrate. We were this district of the year, we were the district of the year. We had a Cognia report that exceeds the national average, we had a financial report that was above average and allowed our bond status to stay intact. We have internal things going on, but at the end of the day, this is a great district, a great district, and I'm proud to be a product of this district and my children, and I'm also proud to serve this district, because I've been in education all my life, this is what I love, this is what I do, and I love serving with you all, whether we agree or disagree, but at the end of the day, I always say, vote your conscience and do the work, not the antics, and even though I will not be Chair anymore, thank God, because it's been a hard year, but I appreciate it, because I've loved every moment of serving this community that I grew up in and I love. And thank you so much, and with that, let's take a vote to say adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, move to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, she's ready to go, all right, Ms. Mackey, is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, we'll take a hand vote, all in favor, it's unanimous,